Okay. I'd like to call and announce the planning board to our June 17, 2019, 6:30. We have a 6:30 continued open public meeting by site plan for 449 Wachusett Street. There's also two other hearings that'll run concurrently, which I'll open at one minute periods. So you can get started and then we'll open up the others. Okay?
Sure.
So do I have representative for that?
Yes.
449.
Yep. My name is Andrew Bardakis. I'm a professional engineer at AMAC, also known as Wood these days. Here on behalf of Sunpin, I'm the engineer on the project. And our staff also has the wetland scientists and permitting specialists for the special permit applications and the conservation permission.
Okay.
And Doug Belling, this is Doug, manager of Sunpin. So we're developing.
I'm Jim Martin, counsel to the applicant.
Okay.
The property owner is also.
Okay. At that time, I'll open up the second continued public meeting for special permit approved for 449 Wachusett Street for use. You can start your presentation.
So essentially, as a recap, since we last met, the design plans haven't changed. I brought them up here that we can reference to go through all the drawing sheets. And we have some aerial images as we can flip through if needed. Essentially, what's happened since the last time we met is we've gone through some interactions with the city and the property owner and Sunpin on essentially three items we wanted to touch on. One was the issue of mass wildlife that was brought up at the last meeting by the board. The other was the stormwater report that we submitted. I would revise. The plans have gone through a couple iterations since our original application back in January. So we submitted an updated stormwater report for the latest design last month for the last meeting. So the stormwater report to be reviewed by a third-party engineer. And the other piece was, as I mentioned, the ongoing NOI application with conservation. So we're just looking to finalize our drawing set so that we can get that NOI application into conservation and get that process started.
Okay.
So those are essentially the three items that we're working on.
Let me open up the next part of continued public hearing for special permit approval for 449 Wachusett Street for water supply protection district. Okay. Let me continue.
So just to, I'll start with the stormwater piece. That's the piece I'm most involved in. I'll just flip to the proposed site plan. So the, just to back up, this is the most recent design again, hasn't changed since last meeting if you're familiar, but the design did change from the original submit all to utilize the flatter portion of the site here on top of the hill and also to pull away from all of the applicable buffer zones. So in doing so, we revised the stormwater design to include a detention pond down here at the southeast corner. So in our first review with the city, there was some minor comments from the Public Works Department that we addressed as part of the modeling software that we use to generate calculations. So we addressed those comments in the revised report, and it's come to our knowledge that there is no further comments from Public Works. But at the last meeting, it was requested that a third-party engineer take a look at that revised stormwater report. So I'm sure the city can elaborate more, but they had contracted a third-party engineer who I met out at the site last week. So I walked the site with Green International's engineer, and we walked in from the Elm Street entrance as an existing walking path. So we walked the site where the proposed entrance will be. However, she made it clear that they're just looking at the stormwater portion of the application. So we essentially walked in. I pointed out where the wetlands were and where we're going to be looking at our wetlands crossing with conservation forthcoming application. But essentially, we walked out to the site along the golf course and out to the woods here. I showed her around where the proposed project will be and where the proposed stormwater basin will be, and we essentially left the site. So I was informed that day that Green International will be incorporating that site visit back with their office, looking at our report and our calculations, and will be issuing a summary comment letter to the city. So that's the last correspondence that I've had regarding the stormwater matter.
And we've issued that yet?
No, I communicated with Green International this morning, and they said that it's going to be another week. At the earliest, they're on it next week.
Okay.
So our intent there is to incorporate any comments or design changes they may have so that we can, our ultimate goal is to finalize the drawing set so that we can submit whatever changes may come or may not come to conservation so we can proceed with our wetlands application there.
Okay.
So that's essentially the first piece. The second piece was the wildlife study with mass wildlife. There was a request from the board last meeting that the project get reviewed by mass wildlife. Again, just a brief summary from my end, what I've read in email communications is that mass wildlife looked at the site, realized it's not in a natural heritage and has protected area. They've looked at previous logging study in the area and realized that no mass endangered species permit will be required from the state office. So that's as far as I understand the mass wildlife's take on the project. There may be more that I'm unaware of, but that's my understanding from mass wildlife.
Okay.
And then I mentioned the third piece is conservation, which we're just, again, waiting to address any outstanding issues here so we can get that application as soon as possible.
Okay. So you still, what we, our rule is always conditional on conservation anyway, so. Do you have anything else to add?
That's really everything from my end at AMAC. Again, we are responsible for the engineering drawings and the permitting with the stormwater and conservation. If there may be others that want to add in anything further, but from my AMAC and Woods perspective, that's, those are the main three points.
Okay. Do I have any, any comments or questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
Ken Mac, 1209 Elm Street. I just have one. Well, one main question is why do we have to make these, we have to announce our name and stuff? Because after the last time I showed up, I get a nasty letter from the Frashawn family certified to me after I showed up this meeting. Tell me that.
You have a chance to.
Yeah. If you want to send it up there.
I'd like to see that.
And I can tell you.
You're not required to come. You have the opportunity to come.
Well, no, I'm required to announce my name in person.
Anybody has to do that. That's a permanent meeting, and that's, that's the state law. It comes under the open meeting regulations.
Okay. No, I'm fine with that.
Okay. No. But, good.
And I can tell you, I have not gone hunting on his property or transpassed on his property or fired a gun on his property.
Really?
Absolutely. No, we'll have no discussion between items. You talk to me.
All right. So my next question is, I was told by, I've done some research, some of these solar farms supposed to have a kill switch so that the firefighter can stop the power. How far is that kill switch going to be in the woods? And is it going to be notified to Leominster Fire Department and Sterling Fire Department? Because I was told that when we had the fire on the other side, it was Sterling firefighter, forest fire team that put it out because the Leominster Fire Department didn't have the correct apparatus to do it. So that might be something you might want to research and confirm. And for the people that says there is a monitoring system, you know, that computerized monitoring system, how far are they and what's the reaction time? A moose crashed through their eight panels and things are going haywire, how far is it going to take them to go off and check it?
Okay. Good question.
A day, two days.
Let's, let's, let's.
Okay.
You asked the first question on the kill switch. Do you have an answer on the kill switch?
Not sure at this time. We'll get an answer to that the next meeting.
Okay. Your second one was, so the fire, you would co-coordinate time with the fire department?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
But that would be surrounded too because we're at Leominster, Sterling, there's also DCR probably, firefighters there.
It would have to be mutual.
Right.
Okay.
And how far is the monitoring, monitoring stations and what's the reaction time?
That's a good question.
Monitor at our operations locally and at our headquarters out in California.
What do you mean locally?
Well, we have offices in Massachusetts. We have several other sites that we own and operate in Massachusetts. So it'd be at our Massachusetts operations, monitoring all of our projects.
And that'll be up to you guys to decide what local I mean. I work in Boston, that's 50 miles.
Do we have an answer on that office?
We have, we have other sites in the area that, we don't have an office per se as to where this monitoring is going on, but we will set it up once the project's up and running, yes. But where that office is right now, I don't know because I don't.
Okay.
We will have it.
Okay. How much power is this 23 acres going to produce?
Five megawatts DC.
How is it compared, is it like compared to like a small power plant?
No.
I mean, I know like a house takes eight panels and that's it.
Yeah. No, no, that's, okay.
That's all I have.
It's a five-megawatt station. That's all the information needed. Okay. Do I have any other questions? Yes, sir.
Richard McGee, 1206 Elm Street. I just had a question probably directed towards the Sunpin in terms of residents of Wachusett Street and Elm Street lose power very frequently, far more often than the rest of Leominster. And I'm just curious if this project adds any infrastructure that will make improvements in that area or, you know, if we can expect as resident, as the community, any improvements with that.
I don't know how it affect your outages, but we're waiting for our interconnection study to come back from the utility as to what, you know, what equipment, what upgrades, if any, are necessary for us, but we probably won't be receiving that study until later portion of this year or early next year.
It just seems since the ice storm of 2008, we really lose power.
Oh, yeah. I tried to work there once.
I think they used a lot of the rubber bands to fix things.
It's a remote area. We know that.
Yeah. And with five megawatts coming online, it'll have to be upgraded to be able to take that power to the substation.
What do you, what voltage do you transmit? Do they transmit that to 13,000 or 125?
Yeah. I'm not sure if it's 13 or 25, maybe, yeah.
Okay. Do you bring it up to voltage or do they?
We bring it up to voltage, yeah, right at the.
So you have, they haven't determined yet?
Right. They haven't determined, yeah, what it's going to take to move it to the, to the substation.
Okay. Did we determine? Okay. Okay. Do I have anyone else that have any questions or comments?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. My name is Ken Bashan. My brother Dennis and I have owned and operated Grandview Country Club for the last 54 years. This property is map 388 Lot 1. It has approximately 360 acres. We don't understand why this wildlife study is necessary. In 2005, we donated 148 acres to Mass Audubon. Now we're seeing moose and deer. In 1972, my brother and I purchased 43 more acres, map 491 Lot 11. This property is not far from the wildlife sanctuary and is also full of wildlife. Let's not forget Nichols pasture. It consists of 40 acres. It's on the south side of Wachusett Street across from Number One Fairway. The city took this land from Grace Powers for back taxes in 1944. In the mid-'80s, two lawyers put a lien on the property stating the city took the property incorrectly. We did years of research and found the city took the land correctly. We then went to Boston Land Court and we won the case in 1989. We then asked city council to place the land in the hands of the Leominster Conservation Commission. They did so and gave us a standing ovation. I don't understand why you think we don't love the wildlife. That's my, my problem. We've done everything to help the wildlife.
Mr. Bashan, there's nothing directly towards you, okay? I'm very aware of the work you've done. I'm aware of the Audubon Society and things like that. We have to go forward, okay? And the job of this board is the protection of the city and to be cautious, okay? Not to make any snap judgments and to cover the bases. Not saying we don't want it, okay? That's not the issue of this board. This board is the board of permitted uses. An issue with a special permit is a permitted use, okay? But we want to be cautious that if there is something there that we don't know about, to protect the wildlife, as you're accustomed to protecting the wildlife, that if there was something there that we didn't know about, that we could protect it. But if we go forward without any kind of study, there needs further information, then we can't protect it because we don't know what's there. So it's, it's a knowledge-based thing, not, not to be adversarial, but just want to know that we have the facts, that we can make a good decision, and if there is an issue out there, then we can do something to correct it now. Because if we don't correct it at this time, it will never get corrected. So this is our one and only opportunity to look for an issue and correct an issue. If it isn't there, we're not going to create it.
Okay.
Okay?
I understand.
So we're just, to be honest with you, it's not against you. I, I've known you for a long time, and the things that you've done up there has been great over the years. So we just, you have some members here that have been in Leominster, they've hunted on your land and they've been down there many times. They've seen a lot of wildlife in that area, and there is a lot of wildlife. And they just want to make sure that there have things that happened in the past where wildlife were not protected. There was an issue not too long ago where a solar panel, solar farms were put up off an industrial road. No issues were made to, and that was before we had an ordinance. And it ended up that people in their backyards ended up with a lot of wildlife. They got displaced and there were a lot of issues, especially with deer. And I know some people live in that area that for a couple of years, they were, they were all over the place. Now they tend to move in other areas, but that solar farm displaced a lot of wildlife.
We have 400 acres.
I know you do. And I'm not.
You're not pushing nothing out?
No.
Only thing that pushes wildlife out is housing.
Right.
And this property is owned for housing.
Right.
We don't want that.
So all we're doing is gathering information to see if there is an issue that we can address it. That's all. If there is an issue, fine. Do I, do you have any other? Yes, sir.
As I said before, Jim Martin, I counsel to Sunpin. I just want to supplement this dialogue.
Sure.
As you know, from your town planner, there's been an exchange with Melanie Jiesman, who is at the Mass Division of Fisheries and Wildlife.
Right.
And I presume everyone has seen her email from May 13, 2014, in which she reports that they already reviewed the forest cutting plan up in that area and determined that that forest cutting plan did not require a study. So they declined to do this thing. So the accord was made. With respect to the correspondence I've had on behalf of Sunpin with the town planner, she referred my correspondence to your counsel. And again, an email was generated in response to that, which I presume you have and we'll see. My position is that it is not a reasonable condition to require any further wildlife study based on the state's determination. But your own counsel has referenced your ordinance section 22-104, and that is with respect to wildlife habitat studies when there is a clearing issue. And your ordinance says solar panels may be installed on no more than 60% of the projects. Large-scale clearing for the purpose of destruction of solar energy farms is limited that which is necessary for construction, operation, and maintenance of the energy facility. In this case, as you already heard, there's 363 acres there. They're clearing 25 acres, so that's 6.6%. It's 10 times less than what you could do under your own ordinance. So based on your own counsel's opinion, I would personally read it, but that this study is not a reasonable condition to go in for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have any other questions or comments? I'll ask one more time from the audience if I have any more questions or comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
I was real. From the board.
My question was anticipated and answered by Attorney Martin, so about the size of the clearing.
I apologize.
No, they have.
I was just going to see if you had something convenient where you could juxtapose the slightly changed project outlay compared to the one that you had.
Ah, yeah. Just give me a little.
Sure.
There's the original layout. You can see the western side. It's bumped out further west and north. There's a steeper slope here. It's a little bit closer to the reservoir and further out to the north here. Again, a steeper slope there. And we extended it to the south, so this is all much flatter over here and gets it further away from the resource area. So you can see that compared to that. Okay. Thank you.
So that's more up on top of the hill?
Correct.
Okay. On the mount, whatever you want to call it. What's the gradient? I can't tell from that, from top to bottom that's on your panels, how much?
You mean just the slope?
Between the high and the low.
What kind of slope are you dealing with?
Give me a moment. I can follow the plans.
Well, keep that up. What are we maybe, what study we're waiting?
Well, there was a question originally that I believe it was by Sal that was requesting independent wildlife study.
But I thought there was something else he mentioned.
Stormwater. Stormwater is incomplete. So they had, they were still, we're waiting for the stormwater.
The plant's complete. We're waiting for peer review by your independent engineer to review the plan prepared by Drew.
Right.
We walked the site, they presented the plan, and I think this would say it would be another week or two.
The peer review that we're still waiting for.
Okay.
Really, again, you know, we're probably, we're dealing with the wildlife thing here tonight more than anything else.
So for the gradient, are you looking for?
I'm just curious.
So down in this.
Are you going to have, what I'm saying is, you know, when I'm talking about flows, do I have, when you open a plant like this, you know, am I talking about 1%, 2%, and I'm talking about 10%? When I start getting the high flows, I, now I get into high water flows and, and other kind of problems.
Yeah, that's, that's all documented in the stormwater report, but just for the low point on the southeast side, it's at elevation, you know, 902 roughly. So if you're looking at the array, it's, you know, the center point is essentially the high point that flows north. We have a compost sock that lines the northern edge of the fence there to attenuate any flow heading north. And then any flow heading south is headed towards that basin. So the basin's at about 902. The middle of the array is roughly 925.
Okay.
And then the northern end where that compost sock is about, kind of runs along the 915 contour, 915 to 905.
What's your total length, approximate?
I can scale it off here. I don't have the exact number from north to south of the full array. Roughly, I'll get you an exact number, but it's probably, you know, over 1,000 feet.
Oh, okay. So I'm talking.
I'll get the exact number.
I'm talking about a 2% rate in that range.
One question right now.
It's 25 feet over 1,000 feet.
It's more like 25 feet over 500 feet. Yeah, it sheds in both directions, but I'll go take through the report. I can get the exact numbers for you.
I'm sure you asked a question. So you've been involved in a bunch of these, I'm sure. We, I mean, we have them in different places in the city.
Right. This would be the.
Has there ever been a fire at one of these? I mean, in the state? I mean, do they cause fires? Is it a, is it a problem?
Not that I'm aware of, no. But it's.
I've worked on quite a few of these projects, and I'm unaware of any fire. I mean, the biggest possibility is something that's probably like.
Right.
Other than that, this is passive.
I mean, the forest could light a fire.
This is passive collection. Battery backup, very, very unlikely, but power is transmitted to the grid towards the interconnection. So I'm unaware of any solar array.
I mean, cars are part.
Okay.
We have to continue this anyway. It's stormwater.
Well, we'll still wait for up here review.
Yeah.
Okay. I think what I want to do is, the main question that came up at this point, and that's up to the board, that there would be no further request for information to do with wildlife, wildlife happenment. And we'll get that off the table. Okay?
Yeah.
We can deal with that as a, as a motion, but we don't have to.
I don't think we have to.
Yeah.
I don't think we can vote on a negative.
No.
Unless someone's going to vote in favor of having them on done.
And.
Then if, if we can have Mr. Max's questions answered as well the next minute.
Right. So I think there are a couple of questions here. Where's, where's the remote control going to be in the area? If we can have an answer, it's to be great. Is there one? And number two, is there, is there requirement? And I don't know. And you guys have to tell me that. Do you have shut offs at others' facilities?
Yeah.
Okay.
Need to find out where it's.
So we'll find out where it is and what the, what that location is. That's something that's a knowledge base that that gets transmitted to our fire department, our police department, just like, I'm sure part of our conditions, the limited access to that road, okay? But that's typically something where we have the fire, fire police have the code or the key, whatever we set up, use the code of some kind that they can get in there in case there is a fire or, or an issue of some kind.
Are there only, are there only manual shut offs? Emergency ones or?
Yeah. Emergency.
It's got to be something that if there was a fire.
Right. It's linked in with utilities, so they're.
Yeah, it's tied in with utilities, so it's like a transformer on a pole.
Right. It goes, it drops.
Yeah. So that's, that's still got to be engineered and designed, but that can be a condition. Okay.
So generally, on these project planning boards, in accordance with their administrative folks like police and fire, work that out. This operation will be fenced so that the fire department and the police department will each have a key to get in at if they have to.
Right.
Or it'll have breakaway gates or bolts so that they can cram it if that. And generally, the power, if something goes wrong, either the utility or Sunpin together can shut it, bring the power down because you don't want anybody rushing in there if there's an issue.
Exactly.
So.
My point was it can be done remotely, or is it got to be done there? Somebody have to go to the.
The answer's yes and yes. You can, if you use a kill switch, you generally can throw, but there's also a remote computerized bring the system down.
Okay.
You just can't stab your finger and bring a five-megawatt system off, but you bring it down.
Yeah, five megawatts, okay. Just first, what do you figure the life of this system is, 20 years?
30 to 35 years.
30, 35 years, just curious. Yeah, I won't have to worry about it. Okay. I think we're at the point where we're still waiting for our peer review. Okay, the issue on the wildlife habitat, I think it's been put to bed. We'll go forward and we'll reschedule.
And we'll hear from Conservation too.
And, well, when are you gonna, when are you gonna go to Conservation?
As soon as possible. If there's any comments from peer review, we'll incorporate them to any changes if necessary and get that filed as soon as possible. Could be this week if we hear back.
Did you say Conservation?
So how long do we want to wait?
When you mean the Conservation?
We're not on an agenda yet, we're, we're waiting feedback so we can get this plan signed.
Do you have an idea when their next meeting?
Conservation?
Yeah.
It's the second or Thursday in the month.
Second or Tuesday?
Yeah, and they have all the information, I think.
Be from tomorrow?
Probably, I assume, I missed this one.
Yeah, we were hoping to get in this one, but understood there was review time, so as soon as we hear review, we'll get it filed as soon as possible.
Okay, so we only have two meetings in the summer, one in July and one in August. Do you want to get on that schedule or September?
July.
July?
Well, July, what I'm saying is, yeah, but I mean, you gotta have the, the peer review and the input from the Conservation Commission next.
Well, we don't really need Conservation.
Well, no, we can condition it with Conservation too.
I mean, I think we'd rather have it scheduled and then if we.
If you have to continually.
Yeah.
To pass on it and then try to back into it.
What, what's the date that we pick for the one?
July 15.
July 15.
Do we have any schedule?
You have three items on that night. You have the Willard, Madelins of Willard, you have 280 New Lancaster Road, it's a site planned, a special permit for a car wash.
Okay, that's it?
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, so that's fine.
So make that for Willard at 6:30? Seven o'clock?
Um, we could do seven o'clock.
And just to be clear for our benefit as well as yours, the two follow-up, more definitive responses are with respect to a kill switch and the monitoring.
Right.
Anything else?
And then, and then the peer review.
And the peer review, which we'll get.
Okay, and then, we hope we'll have information, but we can condition this.
Conservation.
With Conservation, a lot of times we'll accept Willard with, with, to accept the conditions from the Conservation Commission. Right. Okay?
So are we talking board, are we talking seven o'clock, 701, 702?
Yes.
Right. We'll have to vote on that individually. Okay, at this time.
I, I move to continue the site plan application to seven o'clock on July 15.
Motion made and seconded for July 15 at seven o'clock. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
I move to continue the special permit application for use, I think that's next one to 701 on July 15.
Motion made and seconded for use at 701 on July 15. Any additions, corrections? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
And I move to continue the special permit application development of the watershed protection district to 702 on July 15.
Motion made and seconded for special protection, supply and protection district for 702 on July 15. Any addition, questions of discussion? Here, no, no, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Okay, good luck, we're moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, we can have you a lot of, right here. I would like to have a copy of that. Can you, that's, can you get a copy?
I can make a copy, they're downstairs.
You can get it back to him?
Yeah.
Yeah, in that court, thank you so much. Thank you.
Do you want to have a copy? It's part of the public record, so, yeah, me too, yeah, okay.
It was submitted, so it's part of, I have to get it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bashan.
Thank you.
I mean, I've ruined this golf course enough over the years.
I was a card, card guy almost like 20 years ago.
I always got killed that one day. It was raining, it was second or third hole, there's a real slope, I came down, I hit brakes and I did two 360s in the golf cart.
What happened to Mary Avenue?
We requested a continuation to.
Okay. 6:40.
6:17. July 15?
Yeah. If you look at Mary Avenue, the, the Conservation Commission, yeah, but the Conservation Commission came in with a number of wetlands, salivation, different than what they had.
Yeah.
That would have like seven points on.
Yeah.
Well, do you want to move them to August? We can do what we want, you know?
Let's move them to.
Yeah, move them to August.
6:30?
Well, what day do you want it on, August 19? August 19th at 6:30, so move it to second.
So I have to open this first, even though they continued it, okay? 6:40. Continue public hearing for defendant of subdivision approval for Mary Avenue extension 1157R Main Street. We have a letter requesting continuation on this. And because of prior commitments on other things, does it move to August?
19.
August 19?
So move to 6:30.
At 6:30. So I have a motion made and seconded to continue this public clearing to August 19 at 6:30 at the request of the petitioner. Any discussion? Here, no, no, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Minutes.
Call the, call the, call the whatever, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, call the order rather.
Patrick Corla.
Here.
Fred Fergicks.
Yeah.
Paul Weiser. Salvatore Chaconi. Excuse, John Souza.
Yeah.
Harold Turiosa.
Here.
Tom Higgin.
Tom Higgin?
Not here. Gary.
Carrigan.
I gotta make sure you're awake.
Two point oh. Two point oh.
Higgin, are we gonna go for one? 4.1.
What's the score? 2.0.
2.5.
Yeah, 2.1.
2.0.
On the minutes, on May 20, I have one minor change on, what was that, page two? It says is, it should be if.
I make it more sense.
And that looks, looks good. Okay. Motion is in order to accept the minutes with a minor correction. So moved by Matt, seconded by Fred. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
2:30?
Next meeting, okay. No new plans?
No new plans.
Site plans, I had 41, 42, 43, and 44 of all been, 4.4 of all been continued.
New business none?
Communications done?
No communications, directly the board.
You're off the hook, nothing.
Report on the baby, or you gotta have something.
Oh, let's see, maybe I have one.
You gotta have a baby picture.
I have a baby picture. She's looking at animals, she, for Father's Day, she's pet sheep.
Ah, there you go. All right, cutie. Oh, gee.
Youngest grandfather ever.
Youngest grandfather. Okay. Sal, where are you?
Motion adjourned.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.